This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Passed by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilor participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid and the order extended until March 2025, which allowed us to do so. I remind both the member of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham?
I'm sort of here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Tamara Smith?
Here.
JT Terrell?
Here.
Owen Zer?
Here.
Moment of silence. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I will take a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th and the 23rd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those two minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who want a favor, any against, abstention? I just laugh. I smile because I'm gonna say Barbara, but we don't have to do roll call.
I know.
Public comments. Is anyone here that have any, this is the opportunity to address anything to the council regarding any topic, not listed under the public hearing. Is anyone from the public, they wanna address any comments to the city council? This is the time. I will give you three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And we don't have any in person. Anyone participating remote, the, wanna say something to the council? Lindsay?
Yes, good evening. Lindsay Sekula, East Hampton resident. I just wanted to take a minute and congratulate our own council president, Omar Gomez, on his well-deserved victory in securing his position as state representative. It's been a pleasure working alongside of you and having you as a council member and council president. And I am very proud of you and just wanted to congratulate you on your new adventure. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else? Seeing none. We don't have anything for tonight for immediate attention. Communication from elected official boards and committee, Consul O'Reilly?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Lindsay, first I want to extend my congratulations on your election to the Massachusetts General Court. I've learned so much from your leadership. And though we have publicly disagreed twice on highly controversial issues, I've always seen you as an ally and a friend. I think that the city of East Hampton is better for your time on the council and that I'm a better counselor because of your leadership. So I wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
While I celebrate your achievement, I'm also left with a sense of anguish for the working conditions that you're about to enter on Beacon Hill. I've worked in several capacities at the state level over the last four years and what I've seen, heard, and continue to hear is a little disturbing. Here are a couple of things that we know categorically be true. Three of the last four speakers of the House went to prison for crimes such as extortion, tax evasion, obstruction of justice, conspiracy, and fraud. And we also know that they are one of four legislative bodies in the country that exempts themselves from public records laws. And I just want to take a moment and pause and for us to imagine if this city council and the mayor just simply ignored the public and refused to grant the public access to our emails, our phone calls, and our meetings. I'm left with a question of wondering, like, does that feel like democracy? And why is it that 351 municipalities across the Commonwealth are held to a more transparent and accountable standard than our own state? It sounds like rules for thee and not for me. What some of you might not know is that public meetings like the budget process aren't actual real dialogues at the state level. They are scripted for the public's consumption to make it look like there's a democratic process involved. Before the budget gets passed, the Speaker of the House and the Senate President tell members of Congress who gets what and who gets to say what ahead of time. And that a failure to get in line when the cameras roll results in political and economic punishments. If you speak truth to justice, they'll make, they'll remove line items to fund your community's food shelves or move committee assignments, making you appear ineffective to your district. And it's not implied either. They'll tell you to your face exactly what it is that they're going to do and they will follow through if you don't do it. All of our representatives and senators have experienced this manipulation to varying degrees. It's Democrats, Republicans, and independents that have experienced this. And it's not a partisan behavior. It's just simply that absolute power corrupts absolutely. In the lead up to the election, congressional leadership tried to convince the public that Diana DiZoglio has a vendetta against them and that she's incapable of doing her job objectively. I'm here to tell you that I have spoken to current and former members of Congress, public servants in the executive branch, of former governors, staffers, and interns. My experiences are the same as theirs and theirs are the same as Diana DiZoglio's. The challenge is that there's no records to obtain because they self-exempt themselves from being accountable to the public. They pick and choose what they want the public to have access to, and it's probably Massachusetts' worst-kept secret. But without public oversight, it's all just anecdotes and secrets. So when Karen Spilka and Ron Mariano say, quote, "Trust us, we can audit ourselves," you shouldn't believe that they're capable of doing it in an ethical and moral way. Now, with respect to calling them out by name, I want to say that they didn't create a system of corruption within the general court, but they haven't done anything to fix it either. Think of them less like architects of the institution of corruption and more like property managers. The good news is last night, 72% of voters across the Commonwealth voted to grant our state auditor the authority to audit the general court. It's rare in politics today that the people share in bipartisan agreement on anything, but when it comes to this issue, resoundingly, the people agreed. Unfortunately, leadership on Beacon Hill, including our own Attorney General, have indicated that they intend to file lawsuits and circumvent the will of the people. Instead of finding a politically appropriate way forward that creates transparency and accountability while also respecting the separation of power, it seems they're more content with quashing the authority altogether. Again, sounds like rules for thee, not for me. So in closing, I just want to emphasize how unified a win this was for the auditor's office. Neither of our leaders in the last two elections have come close to 72% of the vote. Never the president, the governor, our United States members of Congress, or the Attorney General. I implore them when I say this, that when the public is speaking, you need to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to extend my congratulations to you. It certainly has been a privilege and a pleasure to serve with you over the last three years. I know that as one of the few women on this council and the only woman who served on council last year, you were the one true ally that I had on this council and that will be missed greatly. I have bared witness to the discrimination that you have faced in these chambers, as well as the comments that have been made to you in public. And I want you to know that you handled all of that with a great deal of grace and humility in some instances. But I know that you are going to do right by your constituents. I know that you bring a considerable amount of integrity to the work that you're gonna be doing. And I know that all of your constituents, including the constituents that you've served here in East Hampton, they have an advocate in you and an ally. The other thing I want to mention is we are accepting applications for the municipal leadership academy and will be collecting those through December. The application is up on the website. We do have received a couple of them and will put, make me making some flyers and things like that for people to be able to, to be able to download those and everything. It was a great experience for residents. They were really pleased with it. I think it was a positive experience for, for staff. We obviously had a few hiccups with time changes and things like that, but by and large, I think it was a meaningful experience. And so I just want to encourage people to sign up for that.
Thank you. Any other consulars? Seeing none, I will start with a communication from President or Vice President, Mr. Vice President, you have any? I don't have anything. Maybe communication, just not here. Let's start with committee report, finance, Consul Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met last week to discuss the appropriation that we will be discussing in four minutes in a public hearing. In addition to that, we discussed the charter required review of salaries for elected officials and appointed committees. What we ended up voting as a committee to do would be to recommend to this council that we make no change to the salaries or stipends for any elected or appointed officials except for the mayor and that the mayor, going forward into whoever the next mayor is, into the next four-year term, receive a $3,000 raise per year over that four-year period. So in the interest of getting that onto a packet and allowing time for the public to digest it, it's been suggested to me that we set a public hearing for that for December 4th at 6:15 in these chambers. And I will do so in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to schedule a public hearing for the charter review, required review of salaries for elected official appointees committee for December 4th, 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who want a favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Consul Peak?
In addition, at that meeting, we did receive word from the assessor's office that they will be ready next week at our next meeting, which is?
The 20th?
Yeah, 20th. No, no, the next?
Oh, for you guys.
For the 13th, I guess, at 5:30. They're ready to talk to us about their recommendations for the classification. So I would also like to make a motion to set a public hearing for the tax classification for November 20th at 6:15 in these chambers.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to schedule a public hearing, hearing about the assessor's fiscal year 25 tax classification, public hearing request for November 20th at 6:15 in this chamber. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who want a favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Consul Peak?
Thus concludes. See you in one minute.
Thank you. Public safety, Consul Sarit.
No report. We are meeting next week, the 12th at 6:00 PM in Room 1. We will discuss the proposal from Mr. Mason to reverse the traffic direction on Daly Field. We will get into the traffic rules and order conversation and possibly discuss some other items to include, but not limited to. So this is the citizen request, which has been sponsored by, as a city council agenda item now for the citywide speed limit. And that is, again, next week, next Tuesday at 6:00 PM in Room 1. And thus concludes. And I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who want a favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Consul Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have one supplemental appropriation tonight. It's for $345,583 from Capital Stabilization to fund the replacement of Highway Division Truck Number 62. So there was a, one of our trucks that's used for snow plowing, in addition to theoretically some other things over, of course, the rest of the year, was removed from the fleet due to mechanical and safety issues. It was a, the truck was a 2000 International Heavy Duty, so give you a sense, that's a 23, it was taken out last year, so it's a 23-year-old truck, pretty good run, I would say. But it is time, probably long past time to replace it. So, you know, these are expensive pieces of equipment, but they can last a long time and we need them. So the committee voted 3 to 0 to approve this appropriation.
Any consulars have any questions or comments? Mr. Nederman, do you want to add something?
Good evening, everyone. Consular Peak pretty much covered it, but that Truck 62 was dedicated to Coyle Street and Mountain Road most of its life during snow ice events. So it was exposed to a little more salt than some of the other trucks in the fleet. And just last year, it got so rusty, we couldn't, it was just beyond repair. So we really need to get this one here and in service so that we are ready for winter whenever it decides to finally get here. So I'm sure it's gonna come eventually.
Eventually.
Eventually, it means soon, in a couple months, or eventually a couple years?
The truck will be here, hopefully within a couple of months. But the, I mean, winter, the weather, it's amazing how warm it stays so long.
Yeah, all right. Any consul have any question? Consul Derby?
Greg, I actually have a question for you. So it sounds like this is replacing a truck that does a lot of heavy lifting on the mountain in Holyoke Street and that potentially leads to its early demise or like more wear and tear. Is there any things that we could do to be proactive about protecting this new truck, whether it be painting it with rust-proof paint or getting some sort of coating that would help prevent it from rusting out the way that this one is?
Yeah. So all of our, all of our vehicles now, we coat them with a coating called Fluid Film to really help keep the rust off. I mean, nothing's gonna make them last forever. But the vehicles, they get a full coating with that now, but that technology wasn't really available in the early 2000s or when that truck went into service. So if you, if you don't do it right from when they're new, they, it just doesn't, it won't really have the effect. So everything now, we don't really, they do get, the sections get rusty and rotted, but we're able to, I think, get a lot more life out of them now that we're able to purchase that Fluid Film coating and keep everything coated. And that we do it each truck once a year, so.
Great. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Consul Terrell?
Good evening, Greg. I know I asked this at the finance meeting, but just for public information, can you just let us know, other than snow plowing, what else this truck is gonna be used for the other eight or nine months of the year, just for public information?
Yep. Yeah, we buy, we buy vehicles of this type with an all-season body. I'm gonna actually have a plate in the, that can go into the floor of the, of the dump body so that we can use it for, that we really have a variety of just public works, jobs. But for the most part, this truck would really be dedicated to snow. We have older vehicles in the fleet that we can, that we kind of put through the little bit more harsh work, like using on, for blacktop or things like that. So, but yes, it does have an all-season body and can be used across the city for a variety of things. So towing trailers, things of, things like that.
Thank you.
Any other consul? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Seeing none, Consul Peak?
As a Holyoke Street resident, we will benefit from this. You see yourself, is that what you said? No, I think it's okay. I think it's all right. I will make the following request in the form of a motion. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $346,583 to be transferred from Capital Stabilization, $346,583 to be transferred to FY25 Western Star Plow Truck, $346,583. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the replacement of Highway Division Truck Number 62. This vehicle was a 2000 International 2554 Heavy Duty truck that has been removed from service last year due to mechanical and safety issues.
Second.
Sorry, just for the public, I just want to make a comment. The agenda have a typo, say 345, but it's 346. I just want to clear that with everybody. The right number is 346,000. We, I have a, I have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of 346,583 dollars from Capital Stabilization to fund the replacement of Highway Division Truck 62. Any further discussion? Consul Kuzinski?
I just wanted to say, Mr. President, that Greg, I know I've been here a few years and during that time, Consul Derby has seen also, none of our vehicles that I recall ever replacing did not have high mileage and significant use. And therefore, our city, I think, is handling this matter as best as it possibly can. When it comes to seeing almost $400,000 for a vehicle, kind of chokes you up a little bit and you say, oh my gosh, what are we doing? But, you know, 23 years is a great run, 24 years. Every vehicle that I recall in the police department has been a long mileage, long mileage and a long service. So I think we're doing something right. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, we're trying, we try, you know? We really try to get the years out of them. And it's, it is amazing how much these vehicles cost now. When I, I came across some of the paperwork from Truck, from Truck 62, which we're replacing, and that one was, it was right around or just over $100,000 back in, in 99 or 2000 when that truck was ordered. So.
Thank you, Greg. Any other consulars? For those who want a favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Thank you. Zoning ordinance amendment, Consul Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Greg. Sorry.
The ordinance committee met on October 15th with the, well, we had two meetings that day, but the first meeting, we met with, October 15th, we met with the planning board for a joint meeting. And at that meeting, we discussed two items. First item being amendment to Section 10.096B, temporary election signage. And essentially, it was a unanimous vote to amend, make an amendment to that ordinance because currently, there is a, basically a time limit on when signs, election signs can go up and when they have to be taken down. But in reality, that's a violation of people's First Amendment rights, freedom of speech. And so the, both unanimously voted to change the language to read election signs. Political signs are allowed at any time of the year. No permit is required. And so that, like I said, passed. I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding that. I mean, it was pretty straightforward.
But let's finish that one and then we can start with the other one. Any consul have any?
That's why I stopped.
Comment or questions about these amendments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this amendment? I see none. I just want to make a quick comment. ACLU communicated to us about this particular issue in our community. They are being, going to different communities because some of the community have similar restrictions and they believe, and after talking to our city solicitor, he believes too that it is a violation of the First Amendment and that's what we're doing this. Consul Denham?
The second item was to add the following definition for surveyor to Section 2.1 as follows. Surveyor, a surveyor registered in Massachusetts by the Board of Registration of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors with a current license. And the reason why we moved to this particular language is, in the zoning ordinances, surveyor is mentioned a few different times throughout the ordinances, but there's actually no definition of what that is. And surveyor could be from a different state. It could be someone who isn't licensed, et cetera. And so this change in, or this addition to the definition actually will then define what surveyor means for anyone who is looking at the ordinance or who needs to be doing survey work within the city.
Thank you. Any consul have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this second amendment? Seeing none, Consul Denham?
And in regards to the, just want to add to the surveyor definition that was brought to us by a member of the community. And so just want to acknowledge that individuals concerned. And so through that action and their action of bringing this forward, we have made, well, hopefully within mere moments, we will have made a change to our ordinance. So appreciate that community participation. So in the form of a motion, would like to amend Section 10.096B, temporary election signage, to read as follows. As I said, election signs, political signs are allowed at any time of the year. No permit is required. Additionally, adding the following definition of surveyor to Section 2.1 to read as follows. Surveyor, a surveyor registered in Massachusetts by the Board of Registration of Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors with a current license.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to amend Section 10.069. Any further, any further discussion? Do you have both?
Yeah, we said both, but you just said 10.069. It's 10.096B.
Oh, it says 69.
It's a typo, I guess, though. 96?
Oh, I have.
It's 96.
It's 96.
In the ordinance section?
Yep.
But it's in the public hearing, 69.
All right. It's another typo.
I think it was because it was right before the election.
No worries, no worries. Barbara, don't worry.
Totally understand. We got you, Barbara.
Not a big deal.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat again, the motion again, just to follow the numbers or everything is correct?
So in the form of a motion, amend Section 10.096B, temporary election signage, to read as previously, or to read as previously followed. And to add the following definition for surveyor to Section 2.1, to read as previously read.
Mr. President?
Consul Kuzinski?
May I speak?
Yeah.
I don't want to throw any water on this. I think we've done well. We have a rousing crowd here of folks who are interested in the subject. I think we should get, run this by an attorney to check whether or not it's acceptable to make a change as we're, as we're making the change without there being notification. Yet that's properly labeled as to the number of the ordinance. It's a really technical matter, but I, just from saying, I would feel more comfortable voting for this or postponing and asking for the attorney's opinion. We could, I don't think there's a great urgency to do this tonight. Just wanted to throw that out of the table.
I just want to finish the, I never say that I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a seconds to amend Section 10.96B and to amend Section 2.1 of the definition. Any further discussion? I hear you. Consul Peak?
Yeah, I appreciate and respect what Consul Kuzinski is saying, but we do have the number correct elsewhere in the packet. And we also do state specifically what section we are talking about in plain text. So I think, in my view, while I understand what you're saying and appreciate your diligence on these things, I do think that we probably are, I think that a member of the public who was paying attention and wanted to know what we were voting about could reasonably surmise that it was a typo.
Any other consul? Yes, sir. Consul Derby?
I would agree with Consular Peak. I just want to remind other consulars that this went through the proper channels of changing zoning ordinance. So that means we had a joint public hearing with the planning board. So it was, that public hearing was advertised as well. There was discussion at the committee level before we went to the joint public
There was discussion at committee level before we went to the joint public hearing, at the joint public hearing, after the joint public hearing, and we did have the Planning Board's recommendation with the correct number, and it is listed in, as the correct number in, under our docket, so I feel like we're probably bases covered.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor? I don't have any issues voting tonight, because I do agree with the Vice President. I got the letter from the Planning Board, and it's pretty clear, I will take responsibility of the mistake in the agenda, because at the end of the day, it's my agenda, but I know Barbara was really busy, we had a really important election that happened yesterday, and we're humans, so mistake happens, and it happens, but based on the information that we get in front of us, if you go to the ordinance items on the agenda, it's correct, if we go to the letter that we received from the Planning Board, it's correct, and that was just, I think, in my opinion, it was just a simple mistake. For those reasons, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention?
I will abstain.
Motion passes with one abstention. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes, public hearing is officially closed. We're going to continue with Committee Reports, Appointments, Counselor Riley? We don't have anything in appointments?
No report tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. And Ordinance, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we just addressed the zoning ordinance items. I'm meeting with the Agricultural Commission on December 11th to discuss the moratorium on the use of sewage sludge fertilizer. They have been discussing it amongst themselves, so they don't meet regularly, and so this is their, their first meeting that I'll be able to kind of have that discussion, and they will have had some time to think about it, so I will address that. We are still waiting, to my knowledge, for information from the city solicitor regarding amendments to Chapter 8 to add a new section, 8-26, East Hampton Sherberry Ordinance, so when we get that, we will address that. And finally, we had, again, another very thoughtful conversation on amending various sections of Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Council on Aging, and once we, we've got some additional information regarding whether or not to add, to allow for one member or three members to be non-East Hampton residents, which does provide for individuals who don't, while they don't live here, they do have a connection because they work in East Hampton. So just giving some more thought to that, there are advantages either way to address that matter, so we are just kind of sitting on that a little bit and thinking about it. So hopefully, for our next meeting, we'll be able to, or in the next couple of meetings, we'll be able to have an answer for that. One last thing, I do need to ask for probably a 90-day extension to the request for temporary moratorium on the use for sewer sludge and fertilizer, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to extend for 90 days the request of temporary moratorium of use of sewage sludge in East Hampton, any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. Counselor Denham? This concludes.
That's everything we have for Council today.
Thank you. Property, Counselor Sarret. And Rules, Counselor Kuzinski?
Mr. President, I just have a housekeeping matter. In speaking with the various members of the council who have been interested in the subject of introduction of council business, Rule 5C, all those issues have been dealt with, that item can be removed from the agenda, and I would make a motion to do so at this time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to remove the request to amend Council Rule Number 5C, any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes.
This concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Look like we do everything we have in our agenda, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Aye.
Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. Have a great evening, everybody.
He was slow, wasn't my fault. Oh, no. One finger's signed.